A Zoom meeting. Um, the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I get my American flag in the background. Charles.
I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Justice for all. Thank you, Charles. Item number two, public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? I don't see anyone raising their hand or, okay. Good. Uh, item three, approve the minutes. Uh, the October 5th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll move them.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Comments, questions, additions, deletions, et cetera. I had none.
Good to go. I'm all set.
Everyone's, call the question. Uh, uh, all in favor, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda? Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruah?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Motion carries. Item four, Finance Director, uh, Mary Jane Malavasi. Good morning, Mary Jane. You've got a busy, uh, busy plate here. You got five items.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead. It's all yours.
Uh, we'll get started, um, right off the bat with revenues. Um, you'll see that we are slightly down from where we were last year. Um, obviously due, um, slightly to tax collection at the end of September. Tax collection, was, was down, um, close to 5%. We have looked at the numbers as of October 1st. Um, they're slightly better than that. But overall, I think we've, um, we've done pretty well and will continue to monitor that. The other item I wanted to bring your attention to was the selectmen's line. Um, that revenue that we received are the, rebates from the energy performance contract, which we need to, we'll be sharing with the Board of Education and we need to determine, um, how to distribute that. Um, so that, um, is something we'll be doing, very shortly. Uh, otherwise our revenues are kind of, uh, where we would expect them to be, um, right now. Park and Rec down a little bit, you know, COVID still is having some slight, um, effect on some of our revenues. But otherwise we're, we're in really good cash position at this point.
Good. Any questions? Prevenus.
No. Yeah. And I just, you know, Park and Rec is still taking the hit, but that's to be expected.
Yeah, you know, we're not, a big hit for Park and Rec is the ability to rent out their, um, meeting rooms.
Right, yeah.
Or the lack of ability to, to do so.
Right, and there's, uh, there was something interesting. Early, early in fiscal year 20, um, a significant amount of their, uh, uh, Beach Pass revenue came in prior to the close of, uh, uh, June 30th. Uh, so it's, it's relatively typical that, uh, Beach Passes, uh, spike in the, at the end of a fiscal year.
Correct. Okay, we'll move on to, um, expenditures. Our expenditure budget, um, seems to be tracking very well, um, compared to last year. I will note that the registrar of voters', um, budget is, uh, much higher than normally at this time. We did receive, um, this, uh, grants from the Secretary of State's office. And after the election is over, we will properly apply those to, um, whatever line items within their budget, uh, needs attention. If you remember, there was, um, I think I reported about $7,000 worth of grants. And we actually received just slightly over 8,000. So that money will, um, offset some of the additional costs there. And potentially in the town clerk's office where we are also seeing, um, some, uh, extra expenses due to the, uh, absentee ballots.
Just one other comment on the registrars. Uh, we did have a presidential primary in, uh, August this year. Uh, unlike the previous year, which accounts for some of that, uh, dramatic, uh, increase year over year.
Those increases in registrar and clerk are payroll, right?
Uh, predominantly payroll, there's, uh, supplies and equipment as well, uh, cleaning supplies, but, uh, that's, but that, that should all be being charged off to, um,
COVID, right?
The COVID, the COVID account. But it's, it's predominant, it's predominantly, uh, payroll. And it's going to be higher, uh, this year because the number of folks needed to record absentee ballots has gone up dramatically. We'll, we, uh, uh, on, on November 3rd, uh, we will have, uh, probably 20, uh, 20 plus folks, uh, doing absentee ballots, uh, at, uh, the church, a couple of doors down the street from us where, uh, we've, we've commandeered, but we've, uh, been given access to that facility, that large meeting room, uh, and we'll be setting up, uh, accounting, uh, station there. So you're right, Charles, it's mostly labor.
Okay, yeah, we want to make sure, you know, it all gets done and there are no glitches. Good.
Thank you. Mary Jane?
Um, if there's nothing, uh, else on expenditures, does anybody have any questions on any of the warrants?
I'd have one question. It's, and it's way down on page 32 under Park and Rec. This may be the case every month and I just may not have noticed it. But I'm curious about guerrilla waste services, given that we made the investment in handling our own, our Park and Rec made the investment in handling their own trash pickup. Why are we?
Well, the, uh, the Park and Rec Director is on the meeting, so I think it's best for him to answer that.
Yeah, hi Sue. Thanks, uh, Mary Jane. Uh, so that's for the, uh, just the dumpster at the community center. That's it. We do all the trash pickup, it's the dumpster.
Okay, it's not pickup then. All right, good. Thank you.
Good.
Anything else on warrants that I can pass off to answers to? Did I say that out loud?
You did. Your inside voice.
Um, we can look at the medical? Yes?
Yes.
Uh, all right, um, so in September, the medical, um, kind of came right back to where we were tracking, uh, the end, you know, the end of last year, a little bit higher, um, than, than that. But, um, we did not pick up any extra that we thought we might still from July and August. So we're, we're still low on the claims side. Um, our admin is, is tracking pretty much where, um, it, it would be at this time and also the, the revenue. Um, so because of the claims, we are projecting a $620,000 surplus. I do, um, have the note of the new, uh, the 63020, um, IBNR went down to 649,000. But these numbers are still un-audited, so it has the potential to change, which probably won't, but it does have the potential.
Mary Jane?
I was just going to say, we, we did start, um, we did hit our catastrophic claim, so we have, uh, $46,000 there.
Right. Wait, what? Repeat that? We, what do you mean, we hit it? Sorry, Matt.
Oh, we, some, a couple of our claims have hit the $150,000 claim level, so, um, the 46,000.
For the new year.
For this year. So any claim, any claim over $150,000 is covered by catastrophic claim. So we've had 46,000 over that at this point.
Yeah, but we're, we're, uh, we're like, two months into it. Great.
We've had two, we've had two very large claims. Yes.
Wow, wow. So I'm, I'm always sorry to hear that, but okay, thanks for the financial report. Okay. And Mary Jane, on the, on the 564, uh, total claims, is that, is that high? Uh, I'm assuming that's high for this time, this, this, this far into the year.
Uh, not necessarily. What's high, uh, well, the, the number of claims within that number are lower. Um, and we've had two larger claims. So at this point, we, we, we've normally had higher claims at a lower level, if you know what I mean. And so it's, it's, it, it's kind of about where it might be last, from last year.
Got it. All right, let's go to the $64,000. We had one other quick question, uh, on that. On August, sorry, this goes back a month. Why was the administrative expense double normal?
Uh, but if you look at July, there was none. Um, so if you take, if you divide August in half, you get July and August.
I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get past the 400,000.
Right. No problem.
Thank you. All right, Mary Jane, a $64,000 question. Uh, at what point, uh, do you think we're going to feel comfortable? And maybe this is a question for our consultants, uh, of, of trying to allocate, uh, some of that fund balance, projected fund balance, which is now 6.7 million, uh, to, uh, potentially to the, uh, the, uh, OPEB benefit, uh, uh, trust fund, which has not yet been established, but we do have a fund, uh, in anticipation.
Well, certainly at a level of where it is, um, even if we had some, uh, larger claims, uh, over the next few months, we could still, you know, take out a, a, at a minimum, a million dollars from there. Certainly, uh, talking to our consultants would, would help us, you know, solidify what that number might be.
Right, right. And what I'm just concerned about is, uh, this, uh, alleged pent-up, uh, demand for medical services, uh, uh, owing to the, uh, concerns around COVID. Certain things obviously can't be deferred, but, uh, certainly, um, some can be. So I, I would, let's reach out to them and see what, what they think in terms of, uh, potential backlog because of deferral of medical services.
I agree with move forward. I mean, we've been talking about it, so my vote would be to get it started. The question I have, if we were to make that transfer and, and things change with the, the second wave or all the worst case scenario, can we take it back? Once it's in the trust, trust fund, that's it.
Well, at the moment, the money is sitting in fund balance and trust fund has not been established. Once you establish that fund, it, we, we would not be taking that money back out. I'm not saying you can't, but it would be, it would be difficult.
I still think we should move forward with establishing it, even if it's just for the token contribution at this point. You know, because we got to get started. It's never going to get accomplished if we don't start.
I, I agree 100%. As you know, the OPEB trust fund is, is, um, my pet project here. We are ready to move forward. We just need, um, the approval, and maybe it's a, a question for Peter. You know, we, we need to change ordinances, we need to, um, establish the trust, uh, public hearings and all of that. If there's a way to make all that happen, we are ready to go.
My vote is to move forward. I agree.
Agreed. Yes.
I, I just wanted to sort of throw in for, for, uh, just clarification purposes. I know we've been wrestling with this for a lot and, and, and everybody's kind of got a handle on internally here what we're talking about. If somebody happens to be tuning in for the first time and they're wondering what OPEB is, it's probably a little bit helpful, Mary Jane, to just fill everybody in.
OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. And, um, when we have certain contracts that have allowed people to, uh, have benefits after their retirement, it's a, it's a long-term, uh, process similar to a pension. And we currently pay that as we go and through our medical fund. But through the establishment of a trust fund, we would, uh, lower our liability and have a better grasp on, uh, those expenses moving forward. Uh, we do have $1.2 million set aside, uh, to start the establishment of this trust fund. And, uh, working with our, uh, attorneys, we have developed ordinances, ordinance, ordinance changes. Uh, the pension committee will now, would now have the, um, authority to manage the OPEB fund. And the trust would absolutely, actually need to be established and it's all done through public hearings and town meetings.
Does that mean if we were to establish the trust fund at this point in time, we could use the 1.2 that's set aside and, and not even necessarily go into this medical? Is that what you were saying? That we have 1.2 set aside?
Absolutely. I believe Matt is looking to, um, increase that amount, but we have 1.2 already set aside.
Yeah. There's still question in my mind, we got to get it done.
Right, Charles, I, I'm in complete agreement with you. Um, and, and Pete, we'll, uh, we'll start working on, uh, the, the ordinance requirements in order to set up the trust fund. Uh, the, um, we could continue to keep the fund balance account. We could actually move another million dollars into the, into the dedicated fund. Uh, and then not distribute all of it to the trust until such time as we felt comfortable doing so. So we could, you know, put the 1.2 in, keep another million on the sidelines until such time as we felt comfortable, uh, with.
But we got to establish it, so, you know.
Right.
We got to get it done, yeah. Okay.
Matt, just another sort of background point, again, for the, for those folks who are looking at this now saying, geez, we've got this long-term obligation, what the heck is going on? These are legacy contracts essentially, right? New employees aren't, don't have this, the same benefit. Correct. Okay, you're, you're, you're absolutely correct. Uh, and it's not every, every contract and not every, uh, employee was entitled to these, uh, these types of benefits either.
Yeah.
Right. The loose point, yes, no new, to my understanding, no new contract are entitled to this, but existing employees are. And that's what's the, why we have to prepare for.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I, I know we've been through this a few times, but people come in and out of these meetings and I just think it's helpful to get all the, balls out, sorry to slow it down, but.
I just.
I do think we got to get it going because we've been talking about it too long.
I agree with that. If I can add one quick comment to the general conversation, you hear a lot, the expression kicking the can down the road in government finance. And this is a way to stop doing that.
Agreed. Responsible, responsible government.
Yeah.
That's the whole idea behind it.
Yeah, just want to make sure everybody remembers that. Not, not new spending.
I just, right.
Just to take Lou's point again about clarifying for the public, when you say existing employees, not all existing employees, different things changed under different contracts over different years. So it's not every employee that's employed right now that is going to be, able to get these benefits. And we know no new employees are getting them. So it's a, it's a probably a dwindling group of either retired or existing employees as, as the years go on.
Agreed.
And I can, and I can say that I don't get those benefits. They're not in my contract, so I'm not doing this for any benefit to myself. I'm doing this only for the benefit of the town.
Yeah, and we're obligated under the, the accounting guidelines for government financing.
They do, they do suggest it, yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I think the, the, this general statement that's been made is correct. Let's not lose sight of there are certain contracts that still have medical after retirement, especially the police, that is still there. So I don't want to, I don't want to mislead people to think that new police officers are not entitled to any kind of medical, um, going forward. So I make sure you understand that. But it's, 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 uh, we have reduced, if not eliminated, uh, in the other contracts substantially. So I want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Right, and just, just so everyone has, the, the backdrop is, we're currently on pay-as-you-go. Uh, in our medical expense, uh, annual metal, medical expenses are the costs associated with those coverages for those who are actually taking advantage of those benefits today. So the, uh, the potential, the, the theoretical benefit here is, if we build the trust fund to a point where, uh, it is significant enough, uh, and we continue to contribute to it on an annual basis, that would offset the pay-as-you-go, uh, which, uh, is what, about a, I, I remember we're close to a million dollars a year? For those benefits?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, uh, Peter has his, uh, marching orders to, uh, see what we need to do to, uh, pull this trust together. Now, I think we also were working, uh, with, uh, shipment and Goodwin on this, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. Like I said, we have all the documents ready to go. Um, we just need to, you know, I'll, I'll work with Peter and, and we'll, we'll get this moving.
Need a motion or anything, just to make sure it happens?
Yeah, why not? It wouldn't hurt, Charles. And a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, call the question. Uh, those in favor, uh, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruah?
Aye.
And Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you very much. And, um, question, then the next question is, uh, uh, would folks feel comfortable perhaps at our November meeting, moving a million dollars, uh, recommending to the, uh, Board of Finance, that we move a million dollars from, uh, the medical account to the current, um, uh, dedicated fund for, uh, OPEB? I, I, I would. I mean, that's six mil, yeah. There's nothing that, there was also nothing that would prevent us from doing it right now.
I was going to say that.
Well, what about, it's not on the agenda.
True. Yeah. It's not going to hurt to wait another month and give, give everybody another heads up. And given the length of the discussion here, if anybody was interested or concerned. But I mean, I would strongly, uh, uh, you know, recommend it myself, but.
Yeah.
It's important to let people know, we're moving millions of dollars around. It's a good idea to let people have a chance to digest that.
If to Mary Jane's point, you know, the paperwork is, is pretty much prepared for the trust fund, that's all the more reason, you know, maybe we would just save a step next month or following month.
Well, uh, the moving of the money from the medical fund to the general fund wouldn't have an effect on what we're doing for the trust fund, because I already have the 1.2 there. We're, we're not looking.
Were established, we could save a step.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, we got to move along at this point.
Yeah. We'll, we'll.
If I thought we needed it right now, I would certainly push for it, but I don't think we need it.
Yeah. Also might need some lay-in from the Board of Ed on that one. I don't know.
True. Yeah, you're absolutely right on the, uh, on, on the, uh, the medical account, so. Okay, uh, Mary Jane, uh, I think, uh, budget transfers?
Okay. Excuse me?
Uh, budget transfers due to refunding, uh, just. To the Board of Finance.
Uh, so the first item I have, um, is a recommendation to just move the budget items around on the debt and the interest. Uh, now that the refunding was done, um, in the, the end of last year, we have solid numbers as to where our, our budgets are for the, the current year. Uh, so not changing any of the budget lines. I'm just moving, uh, money around so that the budget this year will match up to the payments that we have. Two key points is that the savings from the refunding allows us at the moment not to take any of the premiums that we might have needed, um, to cover our budget. And should also, at the end of the year, have a small amount of savings overall between the two budgets. But I'm not looking to do anything with that other than, uh, make the budget match, uh, our expenses at this point.
I'll move these transfers.
I'll second it.
Any further questions or comments? Uh, yeah, no, I'm in favor. No, no problem. Go ahead. Uh, call the question. Uh, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruah?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, Mary Jane, item three, consider and take possible action on salary budget transfers for fiscal year 2021 due to union contract finalizations and recommend to the Board of Finance.
Alright, so this should not be a surprise because we talk all the time, um, during the budget season, uh, how we had a number of union contracts that had not been ratified. And instead we put money into reserve for personnel. Um, the list you have before you, um, represents the budget line items that, uh, can be adjusted at this point, uh, since the union contracts, at least for this fiscal year, um, have been ratified. So they're, um, requesting 330, 337,200 from reserve for personnel, um, which is not quite as much as we put in there. So there's still some money left in there, um, into the line items on page two of the memo.
Excellent.
Did we get page two of the memo?
I'm looking at Board Pack and I'm seeing them.
I've got it.
Okay, something must have happened.
It should be on, it should be on Board Pack. I'm, because that's where I'm looking at it.
Yeah, the listing.
It's page two of my memo?
Yeah, it's, I just have a blank page for some reason.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's, okay.
All right, uh, is there a motion to make, uh, the transfer?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, good. Uh, any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruah?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Before we leave that topic of, uh, co- union contracts, Mitch, hate to say it, but we're, 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 we're back to, uh, potential, uh, negotiations, uh, with most of the unions. I think police and public works were the ones that we settled on four-year contracts. But we'll be back at the table, uh, with the unions, uh, relatively shortly, right?
That's correct. Both, uh, both the police and the public works have multi-year contracts. Everyone else had a one-year contract, plus there was another contract that actually expires this coming June. So we'll be in negotiations with, uh, several unions, uh, pretty much should be the first of the year. Uh, and Matt has also instructed me, uh, to start discussions with one of the unions ahead of time because of, uh, some significant salary situation. But, uh, we're going to, we're going to work on that too.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item four, uh, 4.4, consider and take possible action on carry-in force from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21. And that would be 51,744 for the purchase of a John Deere six-foot mower for Parks and Recreation that was put on hold due to COVID-19 and recommend to the Board of Finance. Mary Jane?
I have Rick, um, on the, on the meeting this morning, uh, because he might not necessarily be buying that exact, uh, mower that, that I had in my notes. Um, but, uh, as, as you can tell from my request, um, back in, when COVID first, um, kind of hit us and we didn't know where we were going to be, uh, Rick was ready to move forward with his mower and, and, um, was asked to hold off on that purchase because we didn't know what our cash flow was going to be. Um, at the end of the year, um, we, we somewhat missed, uh, setting that money aside, uh, for, for that purpose. And so that's why I'm requesting that we do so now. Our audit's not complete, so we can get this in. Um, and so we're asking to put the amount of money left in his line item of 51,744, um, into carried and forced so he can move forward with the purchase of his mower. And if you have any questions specific to the actual purchase, that's what Rick is here to answer.
Well, Mary Jane, if I could just say one thing, it's not really just the mower, it's also, uh, has snow blower attachments and, you know, be a, a year-round, a piece of equipment. A mower is considered less than that, but this would have the snow blower, the plow, uh, you know, V-plow like we have on the, our, um, current Toro. This is a replacement Toro that's, I think, a 1999, uh, piece of equipment, so it's, uh, pretty much out of commission. But it does have all these extra things that we can do, you know, use it for in the winter also. That's why the cost is up a little bit. But that's the amount that we had requested and it was approved by the Board of Finance.
Thanks, Rick.
Any questions? Uh, Mary Jane, uh, carried and forced. Uh, Charles, you'll, uh, you'll, you'll probably appreciate this. Uh, my predecessor, uh, worked very hard at eliminating, uh, carried and forced items, uh, throughout his, his tenure here. Mary Jane, how many, how many similar type items do we have in terms of carried and forced?
Uh, there's only two other items left in there.
Okay, good. Uh, and then secondly, this action is needed to move it to carrying and forced so that we can let the auditors know so, uh, prior to them wrapping up the, uh, the audit.
Correct.
Mary Jane, do you have a ballpark figure of what, uh, those other items total?
Hold on, let me just grab my audit here. Um, see, I apologize. Yeah, there are three items in there currently. Money that we're using for the HVAC for the Police Department of approximately 16,000. We have the money for town, the carpeting, replacing tar, carpeting in Town Hall and Town Hall South, um, for 16, 65,000. And we have the money, um, 16,000 for our portion of the next park and rec bus, um, purchase for a total of 97,000 currently in there.
Plus this 50.
Plus this, yes.
So being a total of approximately 150,000.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that, if you, if you look in your, in your audit, it is, um, a line item in the fund balance.
Okay.
General fund.
Okay, is there a motion, uh, to transfer, um, carrying for? And a second? Thank you, Charles. Um, call the question. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruah?
Aye.
And Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Uh, motion carries. Item five, uh, discuss and take possible action on transfers for undesignated fund as of 63020 and recommend to the Board of. as of six thirty twenty and recommend to the board of finance. Uh, this is something, uh, Mary Jane and I have worked, been working on, uh, similar to what we do every year when we have some significant, uh, uh, or, uh, potential contribution to the unassigned fund balance. Uh, and this year that number is, uh, uh, anticipated to be about two point two million. Uh, keeping fund balance and, and I'm, I'm cheating from, uh, Mary Jane's memo, but the two of us worked on this, uh, extensively last week. In order to keep our fund balance at the current about ten point eight percent, uh, uh, number that we've been at for a couple of years, we'd need to add an additional three hundred and seventy-five of our surplus to the unassigned fund balance. Uh, uh, and also additionally, there's two hundred and fifty thousand needs to be set aside to cover the decision made by the board of finance, uh, to allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to mitigate tax increases based on, uh, COVID. So that basically leaves about one point five million available for transfer to committed balances. Mary Jane, floor is yours.
Uh, the first item we have is, um, committed to technology. We have a number of initiatives we'd like to, um, put forward, um, just to name a couple. I believe we have some website upgrades. Um, we have, um, some new modules in, in Munis that we are looking to do, uh, in, in particular, the, uh, citizen self-service possibly at the, um, Town House, Town Hall South and, um, the requi- requisition module, um, as part of purchasing, just to name a couple. So we're looking for a hundred thousand dollars to be added to that fund. The next line item is committed to disaster relief. Um, we, uh, been having a lot of conversations with the state and FEMA regarding COVID and the, the reimbursements that we will be getting from both. Um, we do not have one hundred percent confidence that we will receive the reimbursement that we initially thought we would. Um, so we are asking to put some money aside to cover, uh, shortfall that we might have in those areas. So we're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is that lack of confidence, uh, because of state funding or s- some other issue?
It's a combination of things, Mary Jane. My apologies. Uh, it's a combination of things, Charles. It's eligible, uh, expenses. Um, is, is primarily driving that. We're hearing, uh, at least at the state level, uh, that's things that, uh, most people assumed were going to be covered or not being covered by their portion of the CARES Act. And then FEMA is always a battle, uh, but I, I think as you recall, over the years, we've done pretty well with FEMA in this community, uh, largely because of the documentation we've, we've had. But there is a concern that some of the items, uh, that we have identified as COVID-related may not necessarily be qualified, uh, expenses.
Okay.
Uh, next is fifty thousand dollars into codification. Um, we had a request from George Crawl, um, for, um, additional funding for the, to complete the update of the zoning and subdivision codes, uh, and that, um, uh, had not come through last year in our capital plan. Um, so we're requesting that we set that money aside here. Uh, Janice, I think, is on the line, so she may help me, uh, better describe some of these other, um, items, the road repair and sidewalks um, and coastal, uh, re- resilience. Uh, Janice, you wanna talk a little bit about those projects?
Um, sure. The road repair and sidewalks, um, we're looking at, um, a shortfall in the Boston Street sidewalk extension of which we received, uh, grant monies from the state in order to achieve the full length of the sidewalk. Um, I've, I've identified some additional funds needed, uh, to be able to complete that project based on our preliminary design and, uh, estimates at this time. And then, um, the funding for, um, coastal resilience projects, and I'm sorry, Mary Jane, I don't see what exact numbers you have on those, but, um, we were talking about, um, proceeding with, um, uh, we're currently under study for.
Yeah.
Uh, Falcon Road and. Projects.
Hello, please mute.
And so, um, the, those two projects are currently at preliminary, uh, design and we're actually gonna be reaching out to the public for some input on to our draft plans for those two rows, Falcon Road and Chimney Corners. Um, we have a, a meeting planned for next week, which will be advertised soon. And, uh, we would like to proceed to, um, design, full design and permitting on those projects once we have identified the final concept to move forward with. Uh, in order to, uh, leverage funding from, uh, grants or other options that may be available. And then, did you have the Sawmill Road and?
Yeah, the Sawmill Road Bridge, the Route seventy-seven sidewalks and the Boston Street sidewalks are in the road repair and sidewalks line for four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so getting back to the road repair and sidewalks, um, in addition to the Boston Street sidewalk extension, which I've already explained, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, the Sawmill Road Bridge Replacement Project. That's expected to go out to bid soon. And, uh, we had identified LoSIP as our, um, local match funding, which is short, uh, falling short on, on that. So we need some additional funds there uh, to meet our full, uh, local match. And then same with, um, Route seventy-seven, uh, sidewalk project. That too is going out for public information meeting next week. It's been advertised, uh, to next Tuesday. Um, and, uh, that project was identified originally to be funded through LoSIP. Uh, but that LoSIP funding is not gonna be sufficient, so we're looking for the additional funds this way.
Thank you, Janice.
Any questions? Uh, well, let's, let's get the, uh.
I have one more. Yeah. So the last item is various capital projects. Um, we chose to set aside two hundred thousand dollars, um, in an attempt to hopefully offset some capital budgets that would be coming up, um, in our twenty-one, twenty-two budget, uh, that we'll be working on very, very soon. Um, you know, we do expect our next budget to be, um, a tough budget depending on state funding. So we thought that we would, um, help us out. We do have a number of projects coming up. If you were to look in your five-year plan, and we thought this just might help us, um, this coming year.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, general comments or questions?
Oh, I guess I'll start. Um, the list of projects, it looks to me like they're, they sort of fall into two categories. There are those that are very specific about exactly what we're going to need, such as the projects that Janice walked us through. So thank you for that. And then some of them are more general. You know, we expect in, at a certain point to need this, these funds along with whatever we might already have, along with whatever we might wanna put in in the future. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we actually go to spend this money, that does, that does not go through the general fund budget at all. So taxpayers don't vote on that. Is that correct?
The, the money would be expended through the budget and we would bring the money in at the end of the year as a transfer. Would be an offset to the budget.
Okay, so there would be a budget, an expenditure line for the spending of the item.
Correct.
In the budget of the respective year. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, um, why, explain to us why it's beneficial. And I'm, again, I'm not talking about the specific items that we have specific amounts for, but just the kind of general buckets. Why would it be to our advantage to do this now at the beginning of the current fiscal year rather than waiting until a point where we might have more specific numbers about what exactly the various capital projects are? You know, what exactly are we doing in technology and, and, and how much is that going to cost? Is there a benefit to making these transfers now? Rather than.
The reason we're doing them now is because they will affect our six, uh, six thirty twenty financial reports. Um, so that's why we're, we're, we're doing it now. But just keep in mind that, um, in the, in the same way that you're putting the money in or requesting that the money go in, that money's still in your fund balance and it can't come out or be spent without additional, um, discussion and motions, and you could choose to put that money into any other pot, um, moving forward. So.
Understood, thank you.
It actually, it protects the money even better, um, to be honest.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, so, so basically the way our fund balance section looks is that we have the, the, the unassigned line, which is our, um, target that we wanna keep in there. And then everything above and beyond that, we've put into buckets.
Right.
That oversimplification?
That, that is our request today, yes.
And, no, so that's not an oversimplification. That's exactly what we do. These are funds that we have set aside for very specific purposes, uh, as opposed to the general unassigned fund balance. And one, one thing I want, uh, everyone to remember, uh, we are not the final authority on the, uh, on, on spending of those funds. Uh, this, uh, whatever we agree to here will go to the board of finance this evening. And then once, uh, for their, for their approval to move it into those funds, and then once we go to expend those funds, uh, we also need the board of finance to approve the actual release of those funds from that particular fund that we're, that we're asking for. But there is a check and balance here. This is not just the board of, uh, selectmen running wild, uh, they're, they're, the, the statutory requirements are such that the board of finance needs to weigh in on this, uh, and, and approve, approve what we're doing.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I think my feeling at this point, and I'm sorry I haven't given anybody else a chance really to speak yet, but I'm not comfortable saying that I agreed to committing, as an example, another hundred thousand to technology and, in round numbers, unless I have a better idea of how that's gonna be ultimately spent. And I realize that there are lots of checks and balances along the way. But if somebody stops me on the sidewalk and says, you know, why did you do that? What's that gonna be spent on? And I have to say, I have absolutely no idea. I, I'm not comfortable with that. Different with, as I said, with the other more specific items.
Well, I, 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 I didn't wanna spend too much time on it, but I, as I said, with technology, we're doing, um, you know, website upgrades. Uh, Town Hall South is looking at, um, the citizen.
The permitting, the self, the self.
Citizen self-service.
Okay.
Uh, we, we have the requisition module, um, going in and we're also, um, Matt and I, uh, just sat through and, and we're looking to put in a new, um, new software, I'm not gonna call it software, but, and how we manage our capital budget and produce our budget books. Um, so we're, we're, we're looking at that as, as well. Um, we're hoping to get that in, um, for this particular budget year coming up. So we do have there, there, there are projects behind that hundred thousand. I, I apologize. I don't have the dollar breakdown right in front of me, but we, we, I think we have, you know, it, it may not total exactly a hundred thousand, but we have a number of, um, projects that different departments are looking into. And that, like the requisition module, we're already, um, hoping to put in, um, so that will help our, uh, purchasing department since we have some changes there.
Right. I, I just wanna, I wanna illuminate a couple of the, uh, tho- those projects. The requisition model is for purchasing. You wouldn't believe the way we process purchasing orders. Uh, it's copy and paste, uh, sneaker net, papers, uh, full signatures. Uh, the process is archaic, uh, and clearly, uh, we, we need, we need to step up and do something differently. Another project that we're, uh, considering as a result of this is also automating payroll. Our payroll process is manually intensive. Uh, department heads are actually filling out pieces of paper which are being sent into our payroll clerk, cravo person, uh, who then uh, manually enters those into the system. So one of the, one of the modules we're looking at is, uh, is a, a payroll module. Uh, again, Mary Jane mentioned the, uh, the citizen self-service on permits. Um, we, uh, have been moving towards this for a number, a number of years. We've made some, uh, some, uh, investments, uh, and, uh, the next, the next layer of investments is actually being able to roll out the, uh, the self-service permitting. Uh, again, uh, the, the website upgrade, uh, Tracy has been doing, uh, the best she can, uh, to, to, to hold that website together, to modify it. Uh, it's time for a refresh. Uh, Tracy, I don't know when the last time we had a major, uh, uh, refresh of that, that website was, but I'm gonna suggest it's at least five, uh, if not five years older, if not older. Uh, and so, so those, those are some of the projects. Not, not to say, we, we also have, in fairness, we also have some funds currently in our, uh, in, in the fund for, uh, technology. Um, but, uh, the, the items that we just went through are clearly gonna exceed the hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we're, uh, that we're looking at. So.
Matt, I, uh, I appreciate the, your, your comments and I frankly, I agree with every one of them that, uh, you know, things have to be done. But to Susan's point, without having, uh, you know, numbers alongside each one of those, uh, advancements, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, Susan makes a point. We don't wanna get to the situation where the money's there, so let's spend it. Uh, so would it matter if, uh, something like the, the technology, uh, number, uh, could be put off until, you know, we had some numbers alongside some of your initiatives? Uh, it doesn't matter whether we do these transfers at this meeting, the next meeting, or the following meeting. Can we do them piece by piece? Like, say, by next month, you have a couple of, uh, numbers assigned to those different initiatives, which I frankly support each one of them. Uh, it, it just make the transfers when we have more specifics.
But Mary Jane, do we have any challenges relative to timing with the, the auditors on this?
Our audit is, is practically complete. I've promised that, uh, I was going to come through to the board of selectmen and the board of finance at this month's meeting. Um, if you held off the hundred and fifty thousand, we just might have to move forward without that.
A hu- the hundred thousand, it's.
The hundred thousand, I'm sorry, look at the wrong line, a hundred thousand.
So what would that, what would be the consequences of moving forward without it?
Um, we would, if we were to actually do anything to, to, to do it later, we would more than likely be having to go and removing it from unfunded, uh, uh, liability, or unfunded, uh, um, unassigned fund balance, uh, which always raises concerns in the financial community that you're moving money from your unfunded, uh, to, uh, outside of this process. Um, that.
Uh, well, I, I think, uh, I think Susan has a valid point, but I also think the initiatives that Matt outlined are all, uh, I, I support each and every one of them. I mean, so many, you know, payroll and purchasing and things like that. I mean, that's why we've talked about automating. And, uh, the hundred thousand dollar figure, uh, to Mary Jane's point, you, any individual spending, we're going to have a, a second look at. So I, I think I'd be willing to move forward with this. I, I understand Susan's point about, you know, just spit, you know, not spending the money, but putting it out there and, and almost saying, you know, go spend this. Um, but, but I feel confident that Matt's got a handle on where this is going. So I, I would support this transfer at this point.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't want it, I don't want anybody to think that we kinda just pulled that number out of our head. You know what I mean? That's, that's not what we're doing.
Agreed. And I know, I know you're not, and I agree with all the projects as well. Let, so let me suggest that, um, that we go ahead with this so that we don't hold up things for the audit, but maybe at a future meeting, like maybe a slow first meeting of December kind of a thing. Um, a report showing for each of these, where's the money coming from prior, you know, prior transfers, this transfer and the future, and how do you see spending it?
That, that, that makes great.
That's fair.
We'd be happy to do it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Uh, will we move forward with these transfers?
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, before we go on, Sue, what, uh, I'm gonna attempt to do, uh, well, me, that's a royal, uh, I'm gonna attempt to do. I think Mary Jane and I will try to, uh, for the purposes for the, our presentation to the board of finance this evening, to have specific numbers assigned to those various projects. We'll share those with the, uh, board of finance because they may well be asking, uh, similar questions.
Sounds great. Okay.
Right. All right, we have a motion, uh, on the table. Uh, call the question, those in favor, uh, selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy, aye. Thank you very much. Great, uh, great discussion, great compromise. Uh, Mary Jane, thank you very much. Uh, we're on to item number five. Uh, Board of Education Director of Operations and Facilities Cliff Gurnum, uh, is here with, uh, three items. Good morning, Cliff. Uh, please, if you would, address item one. Uh, discuss and take possible action on Baldwin HVAC phase two equipment rental from Herc Rentals for temporary heating and cooling equipment. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much and good morning to everybody. Um, so this is similar to what we ended up doing last year, uh, with the phase one, uh, HVAC project at Baldwin where, uh, we actually, uh, bring in rental equipment to provide, uh, heating or cooling and ventilation to areas that have not, uh, fully been renovated yet and still have equipment that's offline. So, uh, we presently are looking at two primary. So, uh, we presently are looking at two primary areas. One would be the gym and the second one is the van room. Both of these locations would need, uh, heat and ventilation. Obviously with COVID this year, uh, ventilation is a key factor, uh, ensuring that we have, uh, proper flows, uh, fresh air and, uh, turnover in those areas. So, uh, it's been reviewed by the Standing Building Committee. We put in for about two months worth of equipment for those two areas. Uh, we expect them to be delivered, uh, later this month, if not the beginning of November, when we start, uh, renovating those pieces of equipment. So, uh, we are looking for approval of twenty thousand dollars, uh, for rental equipment, uh, heating and cooling, including, uh, generators, uh, to supply heat to the van room and the gym, uh, for Herc Rentals from North, uh, North Haven.
Uh, any questions?
I'll move them.
At a second?
Second.
Call the question, uh, those in favors. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Motion carries. Cliff, item two is consider and take possible action on Guilford Lakes Elementary School Security Upgrade for Doors and Locks.
So, uh, as you may recall, we did the Calvin Lee Elementary School last, uh, year. Uh, we upgraded all the doors and locks in the hallways. The project, uh, went well. It was our template, uh, to, to try this project and, um, we've had, uh, since had the Police Department and the Fire Department to come out and they've looked at these new doors, uh, to ensure obviously they meet all the codes, uh, and safety requirements as well as, uh, functioning, uh, for lockdowns and things of that nature. Uh, the staff there have been, uh, very appreciative, uh, because it gives them the capability of locking their doors from the inside in case of emergency. So this is a, a project that's going to span throughout the entire district. We are doing two new schools, uh, now, or two more schools now. Uh, this one here is Guilford Lakes Elementary School. Uh, again, we're planning on replacing all the doors and the, uh, hardware, uh, the locks, uh, for those doors. The project was reviewed by the Standing, the, the Building Committee and recommend moving forward, uh, with again, providing the materials for the project and then our staff in-house actually installs, uh, the doors themselves. So it does save us, uh, you know, uh, thousands, uh, up to about ten thousand dollars on this project and about seven thousand on Calvin Lee. So we're looking for approval, awarding this, uh, work, uh, to Millennium Builders, uh, through the, uh, uh, EZ IQ, uh, state bid in the amount of sixty eight thousand, five hundred eighty eight dollars and sixty nine cents.
I'll move it.
Second. Any further discussion or questions?
No.
Call the question, uh, those in favor. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Hoy is also an eye. That motion carries. Uh, Cliff, item three is discuss and take possible action on Melissa Jones Elementary School Security Upgrade for Doors and Locks.
So this is again, uh, same similar project, uh, doing all the classroom doors and locks. Uh, it's been reviewed by a Standing Building Committee as well and, uh, recommended moving forward and awarding the work, uh, to Millennium Builders in the amount of forty eight thousand, seven hundred forty nine dollars and twenty eight cents.
I'll move this one also.
I'll second it.
I'll second. Excellent. Any further questions or comments?
Just, just quick, just by way of clarification though, this is sort of part of an overall evaluation of safety at the schools and this is just one of the steps that have been, uh, uh, undertaken to, to sort of move toward a safer environment, right? Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
It's interesting how we're, we're so preoccupied with our, our current emergency, the whole COVID thing. Yeah. The safety of the schools was immediately prior to that. I think one of our main concerns in town, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Reminder of nothing else.
Got to keep, got to keep all the balls in the air.
Yep.
Excellent. All right. Uh, there's no further discussion. Call the questions. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman, uh, Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, item six, Town Engineer, uh, Janice Plaziac. Consider and take possible actions, uh, to contract with Wengel, McDonald and Costello for construction administration services for Sawmill Bridge project and authorize the first selectman to enter into a contract per the Department of Transportation, uh, requirements. Janice, good morning again, and, uh, it's all yours.
Good morning. Thank you. Um, if you recall, I brought this, um, the selection of WMC to the board, um, the beginning of September after the process we use for, uh, qualifications, um, advertising and, uh, a selection committee identifying them as the, um, the best candidate to move forward for the, for our project, uh, following the DOT guidelines. We've now, um, had them, uh, propose and negotiate, um, a fee for their services to provide the construction inspection services for the Sawmill Road Bridge Construction. Um, they're not the du- design engineers. Atein is the design engineers, but we'll be hiring WMC to perform the inspe- uh, inspection services for the projects, um, uh, in line with what's required by the DOT standards. Uh, includes having inspection on site on a daily basis, um, full-time inspection as well as any part-time inspection, um, as well as the administrative, uh, work that needs to be done to keep the records, um, for DOT as required, uh, reviewing prevailing wage rates, uh, processing, um, you know, reviewing to, for processing or invoicing for the contractor, et cetera. You can see by the attachment, there's a two hundred and forty-four day, uh, project, uh, construction expected. So this is to cover that timeframe as well as project closeout. Uh, as you know, project closeout can be time consuming after the project ends. Uh, just trying to make sure we've, uh, dotted all our i's, crossed our t's in order to get our reimbursements, uh, uh, because we, uh, we, we've, we put out the money for the project and then we get reimbursed by, by the state. It's an eighty-twenty, um, uh, split between, uh, federal funds and, uh, local funds. Um, so we've, uh, negotiated this along with review by the DOT staff, uh, to be sure that this is in line with what's needed to complete the project.
Yeah, I'll move it. I, I do feel a little bit that it's out of sequence that we're approving the engineers before we do the next two items, but I, I, I understand the sequence, so I'll move it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, just quick, uh, question. We talked a little bit about in the, uh, in our, in our, uh, previous discussions about transfers and fund balance, there is some money that is anticipated to be used to cover the cost, uh, associated perhaps, uh, may be not specifically these, uh, these services, but the overall cost of that, that project, uh, which, uh, came in a little higher than we had originally projected.
Right. We, we're responsible for twenty percent of the overall project costs in a match. And so the funding that we're utilizing for the town's, uh, expenses, the twenty percent match is both being funded by, uh, LoSeP as well as what we've discussed earlier with some of that transfer money.
Good. Thank you. Any further questions or, uh, comments? Janice, when are we anticipating starting on this project?
Uh, we expect to, um, advertise for bidding any day now. We're fin- with the plans are pretty much finalized. I'm trying to finalize our, uh, easement, uh, acquisition and that'll be brought to you folks soon, hopefully. Uh, working with one property owner and the town also has to provide an easement for the project to be constructed and, uh, the construction will actually physically begin, uh, likely in the spring and be constructed next, next construction season.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Any, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the, uh, uh, the question. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Motion carries. Uh, Janice, six, uh, dot two, remove from the table and take possible action to award bid number twenty twenty-one, the replacement of the pedestrian bridge in Colonial Road. And by the way, uh, Mary Alice Lee from, uh, Station Set Association is on the, uh, on this call. Good morning, Mary, Mary Alice. Uh, Janice?
Okay, so, um, I had brought this to you in Sep- uh, September as well, but we, I asked to table it because there were a few moving parts I was dealing with. Um, one of which was that the schedule change occurred, uh, because of a delay and the ability to get the bridge constructed as was bid. Um, we were hoping to have this project completed, um, this season, meaning by the end of November, uh, next month. But, um, it came to light that, um, delays in getting the final design completed, uh, to the satisfaction of both our structural engineer and the, um, vendor who's providing the bridge, uh, kind of pushed out the ability to get it uh, actually manufactured in time for us to be able to install by the end of November, which was in the bid document. So I, um, went back to our low bidder to make sure that they can, uh, continue to hold the same pricing, uh, with a change in schedule to complete the project, uh, uh, next spring or late winter, early spring, uh, with the completion date by April thirtieth, um, because we have some birds, we have to, um, make sure we get the work done before they decide to nest in the area. And, uh, so they finally got back to me, um, to confirm that they can hold their pricing as bid and, uh, move forward with the project. So therefore I'd like to, um, award the bid, uh, to Mattern Construction, uh, at this time.
I'll move it.
There a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Uh, call the question. Those in favor. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman, uh, Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item three, remove from table and take possible action on letter of agreement with the Station's Head Association regarding cost sharing of the footbridge replacement. Uh, Janice?
So, um, we had discussed the fact that, uh, when this project came to light, that Satrum's Head Association had previously reimbursed the town fifty percent of the project cost when the original pedestrian bridge was put into place and discussions with the Satrum's Head Association, uh, brought to pass this, uh, similar agreement moving forward. Um, we have, uh, two hundred thousand dollars overall budgeted for the project. We're falling within that budget. Um, currently at a cost of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and change. Um, so I feel comfortable, we should stay below that two hundred thousand dollar budget. And now that we have some definitive numbers with the award of the construction project, I mean, the construct, uh, the contractor, um, I think we can, you know, we're at a point where we can move forward with this agreement.
Thank you, Janice. And I, I want to add in, uh, that, uh, I, I want to appreciate the, uh, Satrum's Head Association for their willingness to continue to work with the town on, uh, on, on this project, uh, particularly in terms of the funding. Uh, this is a challenge for any, uh, any association, private association to come up with, uh, this kind of funding, uh, from their membership. It's not as if they're sitting on big, uh, a large endowment. Uh, and one of the things that you note in here is that we have agreed to ex- uh, extend over a five-year period, the repayment of, uh, the, the portion, uh, that would be attributed to the Satrum's Head Association in order to mitigate some of the impact, uh, and they've, the, the local taxes in their particular association. So I want to thank them for their willingness to continue to work with us. Uh, with that, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
A second. But any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Uh, those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Motion carries. Thank you very much and hopefully we'll have that bridge up before the, uh, the nesting season and the pedestrian, the, uh, the, the neighborhood will be able to take advantage of it. I particularly like to see it because that's part of one of my cycling routes, uh, going across that, uh, that bridge, but I've had to double back, uh, down chimney corner circles, so.
So, but Matt, you make an interesting point. This is, I mean, it's town property ultimately. It's town road right away. People can use it. It's not private.
Right.
Right. It's a town right of way.
Town right of way.
Since nineteen twenty-one.
Somebody, somebody did some homework.
Yeah.
Again, Mary Alice, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you all.
All right. Item seven. Uh, thanks, Janice. Anyway, uh, Environmental Planner Kevin McGee on item seven dot one. Consider and take possible action to put two town-owned parcels located on High Meadow Road, Assessor's Map eighty-six, lot ninety-three A, and Mulberry Point Road Assessor's Map sixty-eight, lot sixteen out the bid. Kevin and also Gary, uh, who's been working on this as part of the land acquisition, which is now land acquisition and sale, um, commission, uh, or, or at least making recommendations to Kevin and Gary, please.
Gary, you want to start off?
Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, um, the, um, Land Acquisition Commission has been kind of contacted by two sort of neighbors or neighboring groups here. Um, one up on High Meadow Road, the other one on Mulberry Point Road, um, regarding two, um, parcels of land, um, owned by the town of Gelford, um, research into the deeds, um, we'll kind of start on, um, uh, Mulberry. There's High Meadow Road, since it's on your agenda first, um, that is a, um, point-two-nine acre parcel on High Meadow Road, um, fifty feet wide, um, by two hundred and fifty feet roughly, um, deep. Um, the property was turned over to the town of Gelford, um, for, um, failure to, um, pay taxes. Um, and it looks like this piece of property was originally probably a piece of property which should have been turned over to the town of Gelford, um, by the developer for, um, future roadway, um, which was never done. Um, the development on the other side, this right of way or this fifty-foot wide piece of land was developed, um, about ten, fifteen years ago with full access off of the middle road with a cul-de-sac. Um, so this piece of land is no longer, um, needed, um, by the town of Gelford for any, um, development purposes for continuation of any type of roads or anything like that. Um, there's been at least one neighbor adjacent to this property interested in the, um, in this, in this property here. Um, one thing to note is the, uh, legal notice I attached to this was from when we did this, um, several years ago for properties up in Shore Drive. Um, so it's kind of the model we're, uh, following after. Um, the legal ID could be changed. I know Gary might want to go into more of, uh, potentially having some sort of minimum bid, um, placed on it there. Um, the second piece of property is on Mulberry.
Sure. Sure. One thing, and Kevin knows this better than I, this is a liability. If these are transferred to the neighbors, uh, it becomes their responsibility to take it down. If not, the town's going to be taking them down in, in the relatively near future.
Right. Um, but as I said, we pay insurance on it. We really don't have a main need to hold this. It doesn't make a good sense for our neighborhood park or anything like that with the, with the property. Um, no connection to other town lands or anything attached to this one here. Also, um, second property is located on Mulberry Point Road. It's a point-two-acre piece of land.
All right. Before you keep going, I just want to double check. Are we doing these individually or together, Matt?
Well, we'll, we'll take them separately, uh, uh, in, on motion.
Okay. Do you want me to move the first one at this point or?
Then Charles, before you do that, um, and, and I, Peter's on the, on this call, correct?
Yes.
Is, is there any reason why the, the bid has stated that the Selectmen have the ability to reject these for any reason? But is there any reason not to insert into the bid package that there be a minimum bid? And I would suggest that the minimum bid would at least be the assessed value, which in this case is seventeen hundred and thirty dollars. Um.
No reason you can't do that. But you, but you're right. The, you know, the Selectmen can reject anything that they consider, uh, insufficient.
Uh, Gary, can I just, uh, query that you said assessed value as opposed to appraised value?
Correct. The appraised value on High Meadow is twenty-four sixty-five. The assessed value is seventeen thirty.
Why wouldn't we use the appraised value?
Um, because I, I've talked to the two adjacent landowners who are the obvious choices and they've talked to each other. Um, one doesn't really want to pay anything and the other is willing to pay. Um, uh, we can also just suggest it informally that they, they pay this number and see what happens. Um, I, you know, I'm of the opinion that it's a liability, so we're better off not having it, but I, I, I like to get a, you know, some money out of it. So yeah, we could argue either way.
That's fine.
I would use a number. Gary, I would use a number, not just refer to assessed or appraised value.
You, you use a specific number?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we can. Gary, do you want to look at basically what, um, legal cost would be to kind of, so we cover those costs that we're kind of empty on that? So like maybe a thousand dollars or something like that, which would cover transaction type costs?
Well, we're going to do a quick, quick claim, which is relative. Well, we're going to do a quick, quick claim, which is relatively inexpensive. So our really, our only costs are the, the signs in the, in the fight, in the posting. So I, but yeah, we could, we, we could use some number like halfway in between 1730, 20, you know, a couple, a couple of grand plus any costs.
Just, just come up with a fixed number as Pete suggested. Call it $2,000.
Okay.
And put a, put a circle on it.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll move it because you said we're going to do them separately, but I'm thinking more $2,500. I mean, it's a piece of property. But yeah, I don't want to spend a lot of time deciding.
And that's fine, Charlie. I'm not, I'm not offended. But your motion, if that's what your motion is, I would second that motion.
All right. That's my motion.
But I'll second it.
I can do it. Okay. Any further comments or questions on this one?
I, I just have a comment. Gary, the, the landowners have the assumption that it was going to be less than 2,500 of the, the abutting neighbors, I mean.
One of them, I believe is willing to pay some number. The other one, his, his comment to me is if I have to pay more than 500 bucks, it's not worth it to me. I mean, he, he has no need for it and nothing can happen to it. I mean, you know, that may change and that was just a, you know, a phone conversation, but. And the other neighbor may be willing to pay it all. I don't know the answer to that.
Yes. I mean, I'm, I'm happy for revenue to the town as well, but I just hate this, you know, like a fair amount of time has been spent on this with town employees and. I hate to lose the deal for a difference of $500 here, you know? I don't know. It's just a comment.
I'm, another, another is that perhaps that the appraisal might not take into consideration this particular situation that nobody can do anything with this except these. I mean, it might be overstated.
Right.
But to them, it happens to be worth something more than it would be to almost anybody else. It's a quirky situation.
There's a, there's a premium, there's a premium for those abutting owners as opposed to someone buying it independently. You're absolutely right.
My reaction to that is you can always come down later. You can't go up.
Right. And, and, and Pete, can we reserve the right to waive the minimum?
Yeah, I don't see why not. There's nothing specifically that says you can't do that. You know, the only comment I make, this goes back on the tax rolls to, to, you know, once you, once somebody does buy it. So I don't know how much time or effort you want to spend in, you know, trying to re-get new offers if this one doesn't go through.
Could, could we phrase it as a suggested minimum?
I wouldn't do that. I, you know, if you're going to do that, just do that. I would do that informally. All right. I'm going to amend my motion because we're just spending too much time on it. Gary, you know, you know, the feeling of the board. Let us know. I'm going to take off the 2,500.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Likewise, I will second. I mean, I'll second it.
Good. All right. That's for purposes of moving on, let's call the question. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Kevin, the second one?
Our second property is a 0.2 acre town-owned parcel on Mulberry Point Road. It's in the area of. Sylvan Hills Road where it meets Mulberry Point Road. This one was also received due to failure to pay taxes. My property, tell you the truth, has covered a lot, large percentage of ledge. I guess kind of makes it not that billable. Plus the property itself is below minimum building standards in terms of acreages there. And the, the town is, but no other town piece of property.
All right.
And, and in this case, I believe the property owner by acquiring it will, it will allow them to expand their house and therefore increase the value of that property. And therefore increase the tax base.
I'll move this one too then.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Kevin, I just have one question as it relates to your description. Is this, you say lot 16? On the map, I'm not seeing a lot 16. Is it 116 or is there a?
It is. Which one? Are we talking about Mulberry Point?
It may be, it may be backwards. It may be assessors map 16. Let me do a quick, let me go online here quickly.
Yeah, the map says 068.
Actually, the paperwork should be, yeah, so it's map 16 lot 68. So it's reversed on the.
Gotcha.
The notice there.
Do we have to renotice it or any of that motion?
No, this was a draft. We haven't noticed it yet.
Oh, okay.
Good. All right.
Still moving.
With that correction, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? Call the question. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you very much, Kevin. Item eight. Eight, one is consider and take possible action on recommendation to sell a used 2006 Honda 90 horsepower outboard motor to the high bidder. Peter Sharland from the Shelfish Commission is here who has been shepherding this project. Peter, thank you for your patience in the amount of time it took to get to this item on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
There, there's an hour and 15 minutes you'll never get back. But nonetheless, you want to give us results of what you guys have done.
Yeah, yeah, we put the bid through the town. Peter had drawn the bid, I believe, on September 30th. Peter, the high bid was $2,001. There was a second bid, also lower bid. We, we voted to accept the high bid in our Shelfish Commission meeting last Wednesday. I forwarded a letter. Of recommendation to the Board of Selectmen asking for your approval so we can dispose of this and return the, the profits to our reserve funds.
Excellent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
In a sec.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Call the question. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you. Have a good day, all.
Item nine, discuss and take possible action to set a public hearing date of November 16th, 2020 to receive ordinance to amend the town code. Amend the code of the town of Guilford, chapter 166 fees. Lou, I'm going to, I'm going to give this one to you.
Thanks, Matt. And, and right out of the gate, I want to say a couple of thank yous, particularly to Janice, who was, put an enormous amount of effort into pulling this together. Pete obviously reviewed things and assisted and Sandy and Veronica were on this committee as well. So with all that. Out of the way, thanks to everybody. Essentially, I've been sort of generically referring to this as the Town Hall South fees. You know, and, and it's now broken up. As everybody, I hope, has seen the proposed ordinance. It's sort of organized in a, in a, in a more methodical way. So there's engineering, which includes health brush and leaf facility. And then planning zoning in when letlands and administrative fees, but under planning and zoning, there's obviously planning and zoning. There's inland wetlands and, and, and at the back end of this is general administrative fees for activity that goes on down there. The, the basic theme of the changes is simplifying the process by which people will be faced when they're needing to. Get these. So in many cases, just for instance, right out of the, the, the gate, if you've seen the red line version, which I did send around earlier, but. So the sewage disposal. Simplifies where there used to be multiple expenses. There's one expense for $175 as opposed to various. Clear, various expenses for different circumstances. Food establishment. Which is section E now follows the language of the state statute. Those are defined by various classes. They're in the state statute. Jumping forward again, just, just again, by way of example, for transfer. Bulky waste disposal at the, at the, at the brush and leaf facility, just measured by cubic yards rather than sort of having arbitrary sizes. You know, it's $10 per cubic yard. So there's a slight increase, but really more than anything, the theme is simplification. And again, same with site plan. Just it, it, it streamlines and simplifies the process by which. Those fees were assessed. Hopefully that'll help people understand what they're looking at and it'll help our staff. Process these applications as they come in.
Great. Lou, thank you very much for your work on this. Janice, also, I know you had a, played a large role. You and Aaron, I think, were staff, the primary staff. Liaison with Lou and his committee. So thank you very much for the work you've done. The, I, I think it's important to note that this also simplifies this for our staff in order to, to, to manage the process going forward.
It's much organized. I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. And Lou, thank you for thanking me, but honestly, I think you are a committee of one on this. So. It's just really, don't want to take it. I want to put credit where credit is due.
No, no, there was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of work by a lot of people.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to add, Matt, that, you know, each department took, took it upon themselves, working with their commissions if needed to establish all these fees. So really everyone here in Town Hall South had a, had a role to play in putting this all together. I just helped kind of edit it at the end.
Excellent. Thank you very much, all. Do we have a motion?
I did.
Oh, you did.
And I seconded. Yeah.
Seconded for the comment. I'm sorry. My apologies. All right. Call the question. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
I would be glad to move this to a public meeting.
You've got it. And it's been seconded, I think. So I is your vote?
Mine is my vote. Yes. Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you. Lou, great job on that. Item 10, appointments and resignations. 10 dot one, act on recommendation to reappoint Mike Meisel, the Economic Development Commission for a new term to begin December 1, 2020, expire November 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectman, Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Act, item two, act on resignation received from Donald Kowalski from the Arena Commission. I'll make that motion with appreciation and regret. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici. Selectman Haverta. Selectman, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. 10 dot three, act on the appointment of economic development coordinator Sherri Cody, the Central Regional Tourism District for a three-year term. I'll make that motion. This is a requirement of the economic develop, of the Central Regional Tourism District that we officially appoint our representative to that. So I'll make the motion as Sherri Cody, who is our interim economic development quarter.
I'll second.
And a second. Okay. Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. At this point, I'm going to make a motion to add an item to the agenda. It will call it 10 dot A. And that is a request from the community fund to put their annual fundraising house sign on the south side of the green. To track their progress towards their, their goal.
I'll move that. Put it in the agenda.
And a second.
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 As to adding it to the agenda, those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy also an aye. As to the motion itself, those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you for adding that to the agenda. Item 11, correspondence. Anyone have anything under correspondence? Item 12, new, old business, anything? No. 13, new business. Hearing none, I'll move on to public forum prior to us going into executive session on potential land purchase. Is there anyone wishing to address the board in public forum?
Matt, Gary McKelney, I would just like to thank you all. If Mary Jane's still on there, she can tell you the number of times that I went in to query her about OPEP, the number of it. And I'm glad that you guys have finally started to move forward on that. That's a great accomplishment.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Anybody else in public forum? If not, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purchase, for the purposes of discussing it takes impossible action. We won't take possible action in executive session. We will do that back out in regular session on potential land purchases. And I'm going to invite Gary McKelney and Kevin McGee. As well as Counselor, Counselor Barrett to stay in if he so desires.
So.
Second.
Call the question. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Trace will. Everyone, please take their leave. Thank you very much for your participation today and Trace will stop. Okay. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
And a second. All that questions, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. During land, during our executive session, we discussed the, the purchase of a piece of property which had already. The purchase of which at an agreed to price had been agreed to by the Board of Selectmen and authorized the Land Acquisition Committee. Largely in the personage of Gary McKelney to negotiate. We are, we have a contract in place. And with the Diocese of Hartford for a piece of property on Route 80 and Long Hill Road. This would be subject to town meeting approval and we would be sending letters to the abutting property owners as courtesy as to the town's intention. On purchasing this property. So is there a motion to approve?
Prior to the motion, I, I'd just like to state for the record that it was acknowledged that at least three members of the Board of Selectmen belong to. A, a church of the diocese, diocese, St. George Church. But because this is a transaction, multiple levels above the local diocese, we didn't feel that it was a. A conflict of interest in any way, but we did want to acknowledge that for the record.
Thank you, Charles. I think Sue and I feel very comfortable with that as well. Thank you. Okay. With the, as to the motion itself.
I'll move it. Wow, maybe I better.
I'm, I'll move it.
Lou moves it and. Seconds it. Thank you. Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Black woman Renner.
Aye.
Black woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Now, as to setting, establishing a town meeting for that date, Trace, do we want to try to do that now? Do we want to? Circle back, but we should probably do it now if at all possible.
Yeah. If you could do no earlier than November 16th, just because that'll give me time to notice it in the courier.
Okay.
We could do prior to the, the November 16th for a selectman meeting at 8:15 again, if you want to do that.
Do we already have something that day?
Hold on.
But I saw something else on there that day.
Yeah, you're doing the public hearing on the ordinance change for the fees.
Of the fees.
But that's during the regular meeting.
Yeah, I don't know about a time meeting for this being. I don't know if we want to do it just, you know, as part of our Board of Selectmen meeting or not, but what? I guess we can unless there's somehow prior.
Well, it would be, it would be prior to the Board of Selectmen meeting at 8:15.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, you know, if it turns into, to, to more. Yeah, I'm just thinking that, you know, if it turns into, to more, you know, if more people, if there's a lot of interest shown, we can always.
We could do it on a separate date at night, if you want to do that.
Nah, let's wait and see. Yeah.
Put it on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Do we, do we have to put that in a motion to go to town meeting on, on the sixteenth of November at eight fifteen in the morning to, to, to hold the town meeting? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Lou?
Second.
All right. Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Rooff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. There being no further business unless someone has something for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Be good.
Thank you.